Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this Schools Forum on the 7th of October. I'll just run through who we have present according to my list. If I don't say your name, then then please shout once I've got to the end. I'll start with my own introductions. I'm Alison Coleman. I'm Chair of the Schools Forum. Also present are Angela Havers, Adrian Orr, Alan Cadzow, Angela Ransby, Barbara Barraclough, who is supporting the meeting, Christina Lewis, Colin Shaw, Gemma Morgan, Julia Upton, Julia Granger, Julia Hague, Lisa Jones, who is substituting for Dawn Carmen Jones, Michael Quinton, Maria Kemble, Pat Chapman. Sorry, I've now got an initial I don't recognise. Apologies. Ah Mackie, I'm very sorry, I can't recall your first name. Councillor Rachel Hood, Ross Somerville, Ruth Coleman, Sharon Waldron, Sonia Harbin, Steve Lovett and Teresa Spilling, who is supporting the meeting and taking the minutes. Darren, could you put your camera on off, please? Thank you very much. Amanda, I do that to you all the time, don't I? Because I went to school with somebody called Angela Havers. Apologies, Amanda. My fault. Welcome, everybody. Many apologies if I've been getting through the list. I've got your names wrong. So, welcome very much to the meeting today. The meeting is live on YouTube as this is a public meeting. So we are streaming on YouTube now. If you wish to speak during the meeting, raise a point or ask a question, please could you indicate this in the chat? And I will keep an eye on the chat and will call for you to come forward when when we have a gap in the conversation. At that point, please put on your camera and please say your name and where you're from when you start to make your point or ask your question. Thank you. Otherwise, we'd be very grateful if you could keep your cameras off to save the bandwidth and we will just have the presenters having their cameras on when they're presenting the papers. We do have a number of voting items to do today. And when we get to those, I'll talk you through the process for voting and give a reminder about what we need to do at those points in the meeting. Okay. So that's that's all the housekeeping out of the way. So we can now move on to the main part of the meeting. And the first item is the apologies for absence. And these are Alison Bowman, Jill Mitchell, Darren Jackson, Daniel Jones, Andrew Berry, Sue Prickett and Dawn Carmen Jones. So we'll note those apologies. Just a reminder for everybody that you are able to send a substitute if you're not able to attend the meeting. And that is helpful on days like today when we do have voting to do. So we'll now turn to the minutes of the last meeting that was held on the 22nd of June. That is Paper A. So if we could now run through Paper A for accuracy and matters arising page by page, please. So if I'll just put my chat ready so I can see that. So if anybody has any points to raise page by page, can you please indicate in the chat and I'll come back to you? So Page 1, Page 2. Could everybody be on mute as well, please? Page 4, Page 5. There was an action for all members to get in touch with Adrian if anybody was willing to be a mentor. Adrian, I don't know if you want to give an update on how many willing volunteers you've had so far or not?
Chair, I've had one volunteer, but I'm in arm twisting discussions with three others. But I won't I won't say any more about that because yeah.
Excellent. If there's any more willing volunteers who would be prepared to mentor new members, then please, if you could send an email to Adrian, that would be very much appreciated. Moving on to Page 6, 7, 8. On Page 9, there was an action for Teresa to send a link and papers to Peter Collins. And I know that Teresa completed that action. Page 10, Page 11, and 12. On Page 13, members were given the opportunity to send any suggestions to Gemma about additional information that you might like to see included in the Send infographic. I don't know whether anybody else did send you any suggestions, Gemma, or whether silence meant everybody was happy with the content you'd included already. Yes, they did. Gemma's just replied in the chat. So Gemma has noted the feedback from you. And I'm sure that will inform future infographics about Send provision. Thank you. And finally, we move on to Page 14. So if there are no further comments, then I will take that that everybody is happy that they're an accurate record of our last meeting. Thank you very much. So we now move on to Paper B, which is about the DSG spend in 2020-21 and the 2021-22 forecast. Sonia, I'll hand over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Good morning, everybody. For those who don't know me, I'm Sonia Harbin, and I'm the CRP Strategic Finance Lead. So first of all, sort of apologise that it might seem quite late to be discussing the 2021 outturn. It's just the timing didn't fit for the June forum. So it does feel like this is being sort of brought to you quite late. So what we'll do for next year is I will prioritise that. So we do get something in the June forum in terms of the outturn. With regards to the main headline, which I'm sure you've all picked up, it's an overspend of 3.6 million. But that's split between a 4.6 million overspend on the high needs block and a million underspend based on the actual spend and assumed recoupment of the early years block. So unlike in previous years, where we get the the early years DSG recoupment is sort of confirmed by the DFE in July, I think because of everything that's happened with Covid and lack of place take up, etc., it's now not going to be confirmed by the DFE until November. And we have had some issues in the past with operational data not necessarily matching the assumption of recoupment. And so until we've got clarity on that, it doesn't feel appropriate to agree the distribution of that surplus, but in case it's significantly different. I have no sort of assumption that, or I don't have anything to base my sort of assumptions that it will be any different. But it doesn't always work out exactly as we thought. So as soon as it is confirmed, I know the early years and Christina particularly will be looking at how best we can distribute that. And whilst sort of the report is suggesting that come to forum in January, the recommendation, I'm really trying to be optimistic that we might be able to share something at the November forum, particularly as it's right at the end of November. So we keep our fingers crossed that we get something from DFE early November, and then we'll work with Christina to sort of come up with something as soon as we can and share that with with yourselves and agree how we can distribute the earlier surplus. So the high needs block overspend was half a million more than been anticipated at quarter three. And I think this well, this was due to a much higher increase in top ups over the last term that had been forecast. So over the sort of whole year, there was a 13% or which equates to a 3.3 million increase in the top ups over the previous year. And as as we all are aware, Suffolk is underfunded rather than overspender. And so this sort of the level of demand increase we saw, it wasn't matched by the funding increase that we received in 2021. What the outturn position means is that there's actually a slight improvement on the overall DSG reserve at the end of the financial year. But this, as I sort of explained, is is an artificial position until we've got clarity on the early years recoupment. So basically, we would move that we move the surplus into our DSG reserve. But we are aware that we're going to have to, we will definitely have to return some of the recoupment. It's estimated about half a million. If there's, you know, if any more of that other million that's underspent has to be recouped, that will obviously come off our DSG reserve as well. The high needs block deficit increased from 10.3 million to 14.9 million. And what I want to sort of just highlight is whilst this is a significant increase, it's just worth noting the position for Norfolk, who, as we know, are funded substantially better than us. And at the same point, whereas we have a high needs block deficit of 14.9 million, theirs is 32 million at the same point in time. And they are significantly better funded than us and have been for the last few years. So that's the position for 2020-1. For 21-22, we reported a position at quarter one to Cabinet of an overspend of 2.4 million, of which 2.9 million was an overspend against DSG, against Send. And there was a half a million on things like the CSSB that we're going to hold for the additional for the loss of CSSB next year and part of the growth budget. What I would like to draw Schools Forum attention to, though, is that we're currently working on quarter two, and we know that the Send forecast has increased by further 1.4 million. So just to be aware of that. A lot of that is around, so over the summer period this year, 2021, there were 400 requests for high needs funding compared to 100 in the same period last year. And in the summer term, there were 58 requests for high needs funding ban changes, of which 36 were the highest level of funded support. And we had no such requests in the spring term for that. So on the assumption that Q2, we just have to hope that everything stays as it is. And if the position at the end of the financial year, the high needs block DSG deficit would be 16.9 million. So that takes into account our projected overspend plus the 2.3 million transfer from the Schools block that have agreed. And those who've been on the Schools Forum this time last year will recall that Schools Forum agreed to a 0.5% transfer of the Schools block to offset the high needs block deficit every year for five years as the only sustainable way of managing the deficit without us getting a significant increase in funding that matches demand. And we will have that vote in next month's paper as part of the budget setting paper. So that's really the paper. So I'm happy to take any questions if anybody's has got any on that.
Any questions from anybody? There's no indication in the chat at the moment that anybody has any comments or questions?
I think Amanda's got a hand up, Alison.
Amanda, I'll come to you. Thank you. And then Darren after that.
Hello. Not really a question as such, just really a comment to make from the early years perspective. I understand the use of the financial words surplus and underspend, but at a provider level, obviously, it's not a surplus or underspend from our point of view because it's money that we haven't yet had distributed to us. Early years providers are still have still incurred all the costs, whether the children have attended or not. So they will very much welcome that that money being passed to them as soon as possible. And I assume that we will discuss that in the early years consultative forum meeting that we've got planned for the beginning of November. Thank you.
I think I'd completely agree with that. We're really aware of the pressures. And obviously, passed through sort of the Covid pandemic, the council did make sure that we covered costs of setters who were really helpful and opened up to children who they wouldn't normally receive. That didn't come out of the DSG element. We paid for that from core funding. But as Christina's put in the chat, I think, you know, we really want to get it. It's no good just sitting there in the reserves. But there's just a bit of what we don't want to do is say, well, we can hand out 700,000 of that. And then actually, the DFE say, no, we, you know, we're actually only going to give you exactly what. So I think that's just our little bit of, but we're, you know, we very much want to be able to support early years, considering everything they did during the pandemic particularly. So that's absolutely noted. Thanks.
Thank you.
And for those who are not following on the chat, Christina has confirmed that it will be an agenda item for your meeting in November, Amanda. So that would be good for it to be discussed there. Thank you. Before it comes back to forum. Darren, you're the next with your hand up. I'll come to you next. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Two questions, if I may, Sonia.
Yeah.
With particularly Point 20 and 21 on the Paper B, what financial forecasting has been put into the provision of transport for pupils to attend the new provisions in schools, those with sent a new mainstream into the new specialist provisions? Because I'm not sure in Suffolk, which funding stream pays for the transport?
That comes from core funding, Darren, so not DSG. It has to be funded through core base. So it becomes a pressure on council resources rather than DSG.
Thank you. And my other question, with presuming that the Send central services are paid out of the high needs block, do we know what percentage we take to cover that and how that compares to whether LA is like Norfolk and so forth? And I guess with the recent reorganisation of the services, did that realise a cost saving? Or is there better value for money from the reorganisation?
Sorry, the central school services block element?
So to pay for the Send central services from the local authority, does that come from high needs block?
No, the high needs block, there's really specific guidance on what you can spend out of the DSG, the high needs block element, and what has to be funded from core funding. So it's quite complex. But basically, DSG, the high needs block DSG funds the places and sort of some of that support in those places. But the actual sort of doing the EHCPs and the assessment and all of that comes from core funding. So that is outside of this. Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you very much.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions about this paper before we move on? No, nothing coming through. Okay, thank you very much for that one then, Sonia. So we now move on to Paper C. This one is a decision making paper, and it's about the central services, central school services block. So back over to you then, Sonia. Thank you.
Okay, yep. So back to me again. So just to recap on the CSSB. So it's the third year of a 20% reduction to the CSSB historical commitments element of this part of the block, which is applied by the DFE. It's important to say that the reduction is a DFE application. And for those who were at the forum in June and obviously read the minutes, Schools Forum members did agree to proposed initial savings at the meeting in June. And this was about just over half a million of what we needed to make. We have to find in total 847,000. So this paper details how officers are suggesting we make the remainder of those savings. The proposed savings won't impact on the services currently provided through this funding stream to school, other than there's an increase of 90,000 of high needs block commitments, as these costs can legitimately be funded in that way. So this comes back to Darren's point about what we can charge against high needs block as opposed to what we can't. So the savings that we're proposing put the risk of not meeting those on core funding rather than DSG other than the high needs block, the 90k. But it's as part of the process of identifying the savings, I think it's clear that any further savings would impact on the capacity of ENL particularly to undertake its statutory duties. And it would also significantly change the early help offer provided to those children, families in need. So as sort of as part of that work, I think what what we sort of looked at was that future savings from the CSSB, we now put the whole of that as a cost pressure to core funding on the council's medium term financial plan. And, you know, we're working with our cabinet members to sort of see how we can make sure that they are covered corporately, because the impact they would have on the directorate as well as schools would just be, it's just not sustainable. So as with the poor Send funding that Suffolk get, we're sort of lobbying to increase funding to cover these costs, because unfortunately, the DFE's assumption is that the historical commitments will reduce over time. And that's not the case for the services that Schools Forum have agreed, because these are about staffing. And actually, those costs go up because of inflation, etc. So that's really where we're at. The DFE guidance means that even if the savings are agreed, we still have to vote line by line, hence why there'll be some voting at the end of this. And we do have representation from the services who have obviously detailed the services in the annexes. If you've got any questions regarding service delivery and the impact that reducing those budgets have. I can see that Darren's just come up the question there, Alison.
Is the core Send funding the same as previously referenced core funding?
The core Send funding. Yeah. So when I say core, but when I when I talk about core budget, that's basically base budget would be another term. So it's not DSG.
Thank you.
Members, you were given a lot of detail in the paper about the impact of the proposed savings, but also the the service provision that is provided by the 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 funding to each of those CSSB elements. So I don't know whether you do have any questions. Adrian, I can see you've got your hand up. So I'll come to you first.
Yeah, if I may, Chair, please, just adding to Sonia's point, I'll just introduce myself as well, Adrian Orr, Assistant Director, Education Skills and Learning for any members that don't don't know me. It's just worth pointing out, particularly for people that might be here as substitutes or new members, that the central school service block is what replaced the old education support grant that used to come directly to local authorities to fund their central services and their statutory duties. And some some forum members will be real experts on the history of how the education support grant was turned into the central school services block. So it's important that people see this is funding that is put into the DSG, into the dedicated schools grant, to meet the needs of the local authority in all its statutory functions. But we are faced with this particular challenge, as Sonia has shared very eloquently, that the historic funding is being reduced by the by the Department for Education. Certain irony in that, in that part of the underfunding in Send is that historic funding is locked into that. So two quite different positions there. But yeah, just to just to make it clear to anybody that's that's new, that this is not funding that is coming actually out of schools. It's money that was put into the into the dedicated schools grant for the local authority's statutory functions. Hopefully, that's helpful to people.
Thanks, Adrian. It's always worth reiterating that and reminding people that it wasn't always money that schools would have had. It was a separate funding pot that was added into the dedicated schools grant pot. Any other questions or comments before we move to doing the five votes on this paper? Has anybody got anything they wanted to clarify before we move to that point? Now is your opportunity. Otherwise, I will expect you all to be prepared and ready, members, to to vote when we start. Just give you a moment. Otherwise, I'll turn to Barbara, who I know is poised to make all the voting happen for us this morning. So our first vote, vote one, is do we agree the described savings proposed of 0.313 million? So could members please vote? So it's members only. Please vote for, against or abstain on your screen now, please. There's four responses so far. So could the remainder now eight responses? Adrian, could you remind me how many people should be voting today, please? How many members we've got round the table? We've now had 10, 11?
Just it's, I think it is, it is, it is 12, yeah.
Well, we've now had 12. So thank you. We've had 12 votes and all 12 votes have been four. So we have agreed to the proposed savings of 0.313 million. Thank you. Barbara, if you could now load vote number two, which is, do we agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the education and learning team of 0.872 million? So could you please vote for, against or abstain for the vote that is now on your screen, please? Had eight responses so far, now 10. Two more people to vote, please. Thank you very much. We have now had the 12 responses. We have had 92% in favour and 8%, that's two abstentions. Thank you. One abstention. Anyway, 92% for and 8% abstain. Thank you. So vote number three is, do we agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the early help team of 2.148 million? So again, if you could vote for, against or abstain for the question that's now appearing on your screen. It's now loading. Thank you. 10 responses are in, two to go. All 12 are in. Thank you very much. We've had all 12 responses, 100% have voted for. So we have agreed the funding of the services described for early help. Thank you very much. So we now move on to vote number four. So Barbara, if you can now load that one, thank you. We have been asked to agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the virtual school for looked after children of 0.345 million. So vote number four is now on your screen. If you could vote for, against or abstain for this one, please. Nine responses in so far. All 12 are in. Thank you very much. And everyone has voted in favour of the described services for looked after children by the virtual school. Thank you very much. So now move on to the final vote for this paper, which is, we've been asked whether we agree the funding of any residual long term redundancy costs of 0.023 million. So that vote is now appearing on your screen now. Again, if you could please either vote for, against or abstain. That's five in so far. Now 11, one to go. Can you all just make sure you voted? There's one to go, please. Happy for you to abstain if you don't want Happy for you to abstain if you don't want to vote for or against, but it would be helpful if the final person could vote, please.
Sorry, Alison, I can't actually see the vote. It hasn't appeared on my screen this time.
Ah, okay. Maria, if you wish to stay anonymous and email Teresa separately, that's up to you. If you're happy for people to know what your response is, you could put it in the chat. I'll leave it with you. But in any event, we've had eleven responses. All of those responses have been in favour. So the, the, the vote is agreeing that we will pay the agree to that amount of money being in the CSSB for long term redundancy costs of naught point naught two three million. Thank you very much. So thank you, everybody, for voting on that paper. That now concludes Paper C. So we can now move on to Paper D. Thank you very much for your input on that one, Sonia. Are you leading Paper D or is Michael doing that one?
No, I'll let Mike do that one.
Lovely. Okay. Hand over to you then, Mike, for Paper D, which is about the growth policy and funding update. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. For those that do not know me, my name is Michael Quinton. I am a senior accountant and I support Children and Young People Services and everything to do with schools. I've got Pete Mumford here who is joining me today. Pete, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Morning, Chair. Morning, everyone. I'm Pete Mumford, Schools Planning Manager within Education Skills and Learning.
Okay, so this paper provides a brief update on school pupil growth in Suffolk. And to note the future pressures on pupil growth with the new schools in the pipeline and the expected increased expenditure with setting up these new schools and pupil growth. So you can see on pages five and six, Joy and Peter provide a sort of a pipeline of those schools that are going to be experiencing growth and some of the new schools in the pipeline as well. The other thing that Schools Forum is being asked to decide in this paper is if it would be appropriate to amend Suffolk's growth policy to include a falling roles fund from two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. So the reason for this recommendation is we've had a number of schools sort of get in contact with the local authority over the past six months to a year that are identifying themselves as having falling roles. So obviously this can lead to staff redundancies, large class sizes, reduced funding to spend on resources and facilities. And even as a last resort, school closures. And we have had two or three school closures in the last ten years where the people roles had fallen to such an extent that the schools are no longer viable. So we feel that young boys' schools would be very beneficial and appreciated. So the alternative options for Schools Forum is that you could decide not to agree with the falling roles fund and not to look at increasing the overall growth pot over the next couple of years or so. But obviously this would risk overspending on this budget and also increasing the, the overall DSG deficit. So it's something that we would like you to, to consider. So the growth funding is funded from the schools block. So it can be used for growth in pre sixteen pupil numbers to meet the basic need. It can support additional classes to meet the infant size statutory regulation. And also costs for new or expanded schools. We think it's just important to note that any growth funding for specialist provision or early years providers needs to be funded from the respective blocks. So there's, there's nothing in here regarding new, new special schools and new specialist provision which are currently being, being built in the, in the county at the moment. We have, as I said earlier, we have had a number of schools this year asking for support due to falling roles, which is, which has prompted the, the need to look into this. You know, unfortunately, at this time, we haven't got funding to, to do this. But we are working with those schools as best we can without giving them any financial support on how they can sort of, you know, work in the meantime until potentially we can offer them some, some financial help. So the falling roles fund has been a permitted use in LA's growth and place planning policy. However, in Suffolk, we've never needed to consider using this method of funding up until now. But the reason for this is that county wide, we're expecting a drop in reception intake of around eleven hundred pupils over the next four years. That's quite a significant number of pupils that we're, we're losing in the system. And the other thing to recognise is that falling roles will not affect schools in a uniform way like it does with the growth policy. So the growth policy is very formulaic. We're setting up a new class in a school and we know how much that will cost. With falling roles, it's going to impact on schools in varying ways. And you can see in, on page three, there's a, there's a few bullet points there which, you know, some of the things that could occur in schools that that are seeing the falling roles. The other thing to note is the criteria for allocating the falling roles is, sorry, should contain clear objective trigger points for qualification. And the bullets below paragraph fifteen are set out by the DFE in their technical guidance. So, you know, it's, it's very sort of, it's very clear on what a local authority should do and what it should follow. And you can see in Annex A, we have included some sort of exemplar, local authority policies that we will have a look at. We will go through the modelling and we will see which fits best for Suffolk. And also, you know, what is affordable for Suffolk and our total DSG that we receive in. So so that's where we are at the moment. As I said, the decision is, would you like us to go away and have a look into this and implement this for twenty two, twenty three? But what I'll do now, I'll just pass you over to Pete, who can just maybe talk through some of the future pressures that we're looking at over the next few years.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So on falling roles, to give a bit of background on this. From around twenty twelve, we saw quite an increase in the primary age population. We saw a number of our schools having to be expanded or take additional pupils to meet that demand. That has always been quite a cyclical thing. So now from around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen onwards, we've seen a decline back to the levels we saw pre twenty twelve. And what that's meant is, as Mike's described there, a number of schools now carrying surplus places within their role. And this can range, in, in the report, I think I mentioned it, sixty percent of schools were expecting to see a fall in role between now and twenty twenty five. We forecast over a five year period. And that can range from one pupil through to over a hundred in some cases. I think three schools may be seeing a fall of around a hundred pupils across that period, which is quite significant. And in terms of percentages, one school, actually a smaller school, so again, the drop in actual pupil numbers isn't quite as stark. But actually could mean a reduction of around fifty percent of their pupil role. So it is a significant impact on a number of these schools. Again, it's something that might, might, might start to recover. We, we're not sure about the impact of Covid yet on birth rates. And that's something we're going to be monitoring over the next couple of years, certainly. So it's not something that might be needed indefinitely. But certainly giving schools that support until those, those birth rates start to increase again is, is something we would very much like you to consider. In terms of growth, having seen a pause in housing development over the last eighteen months for, for various reasons, as you can imagine, resource and shortage of supplies being one. We're now seeing housing really start to come through again and a number of housing applications coming forward for approval. Which means that our strategies in and around the county to mitigate the demand of pupils coming from those housing developments is now starting to impact on the number of schools. And from page five of the report onwards, you can see where our pipeline of future growth is going to be in terms of new schools and expanding schools. But it is really at the moment, as I say, only due to housing development. The, the demographic growth, as I mentioned, has, has not been there to, to require that. So it really is around housing development which should be paid for by obviously developer contributions, the actual physical buildings. But that growth funding would still be needed to, to assist the school in their growth from a, an operational standpoint. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks both of you very much for those introductions. We've had a couple of questions come into the chat so far. The first is from Julia Upton, who asks, is there consideration for new special school provision growth in the other pots? I think I saw in the paper that you said special school provision had to come from elsewhere, but you can clarify, Mike.
It, it does. So especially for specialist provision, that does need to be funded out of the high needs block. Because obviously this growth pot is from the schools block. So, you know, we can't have cross purposes, cross purpose funding, if you like. So it's something that Gemma has mentioned in papers previously and, and it's something which is sort of being looked at and we do fund. But we haven't got a, a policy as such, but we have got something that, you know, that we do provide specialist provision. But it's, it's something we can, we can sort of feed back to Forum at a later date if necessary.
And am I right in thinking it's something that's been flagged that in the past with Pete was just talking about the, the new school provision that's funded by developers? That an element of that funding is, is now being earmarked for special school provision as well?
That's right, yes. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, just to add, that's something we've been working with our planning colleagues on. So that when we see contributions from housing developments, special education is part and parcel of our asks, yeah.
Thank you. The, the next question is from Rowena Mackey, who asks, what types of school are self identifying as being impacted by falling roles? Is there anything you can say about that?
Yeah, we can do. Pete might want to add something, but we've, we've had a few schools phoning up and it tends to be sort of those smaller rural schools and that don't have the same economies of scales as some of the larger sort of more urban schools. So they're the ones that obviously face more difficulties because their funding isn't so good. They've got smaller teaching resources and smaller support staff resources as well. So it tends to be sort of the smaller and, and more rural schools that are struggling a little bit at the moment.
Yeah, and also we're seeing a number of schools requesting to reduce their pans so they can again manage more operationally in terms of organising classes. But obviously what we have concerns around on that particular aspect is then if we need the places going forward, that those spaces within the school that are being mothballed, if you like, are then able to be brought back if we do need those places. So again, it's supporting schools with that so they have the funding to be able to manage a much larger building than they actually need until we, we see those places coming through again.
Okay, thank you. The next question is from Darren Woodward, who asks about those schools who are in a position of requires improvement but have got falling roles and the difficulties they're placed in that if the criteria is that they have to have at least a good Ofsted inspection to be able to be considered for this type of support. Have you got any comment on that?
Yeah, it's something that me, Pete and Joy have sort of discussed and I think we're going to go away and to sort of discuss this in, in further detail and just see what, you know, what discretion local authorities have because we feel it is slightly unfair on, on those schools. So it's something we're going to look at, Darren, and go away and discuss.
Steve Love has now made a point. Steve, anybody's welcome to come on screen and, and raise their question themselves. I just need you to flag in the chat that you'd like to ask a question. They don't all have to be just asked by me. But I'll start this off. Steve has raised the point about the fact that there's often a lag when there's an increase in role before funding comes through. And he's suggesting that this lag should provide sufficient time for schools to manage reduced budgets as numbers fall. Any thoughts on that?
I think it's just difficult. I think it's difficult for schools to, to plan. I know there's a lag in funding. There's a, an increased lag for academy funding, as we know. Sort of nearly a year, but it's, I think it's difficult. I think schools sort of sometimes are a bit blindsided by some of these things. You know, Pete, again, in your, your role as planning, I know sort of smaller schools, if a family moves out of the area, that could be three, four children gone from, from the role. And, you know, that's a significant impact on smaller schools. So it's, it's a difficult one.
It's worth us noting and bearing that in mind though. I understand why the question was raised. Rowena, you have your hand up. I'll come to you next. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Rowena Mackey. I'm new to Forum and I'm the head teacher at Northgate High School. My question is just about not quite understanding why there's what looks like twelve new schools being developed and well, developed, obviously to deal with increasing numbers somewhere, but we're concerned about falling roles in other centres. Is this very much around a demography of where people are choosing to live? So smaller village schools are struggling more. It just, it seems like almost there's a double commitment to open a new school, but then keep a school open as well. So I'm, I'm just wondering about sort of the social impact, I guess, around some of those decisions that might need to be taken. Thank you.
I'm happy to start on this one, Mike. Absolutely, Rowena. I mean, it is, it is where the new housing is going. It's going in the, in the more built up areas. We're seeing the rural schools not really seeing much housing coming through. And so because of that, they're, they're suffering probably more with the falling roles as a percentage of their, of their role than a number of other schools in those built up areas. For us, obviously, when we're talking about new schools and those new schools we mentioned from page five onwards, they're significant developments. So a, a, a development of over six hundred homes, for instance, would likely require a new school because it's a community school. It's there to serve the community. One thing that we've actually been having a conversation with our regional schools commissioner colleague is around the, the play off between that in terms of building the new school. What do we do if schools on the periphery of the development have got surplus places and how we manage that? Because we're conscious that what we don't want to do is make that school sustainability issues greater by building a new school in the development, which might then become a more attractive option for parents and carers. So it's, it's something we're having, we're having further conversations on. But, but in answer to your, your question, really is around, yeah, where those, where those hazards are being built and it tends to be in the more built up areas of the county at the moment.
Thank you both. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make or any questions they'd like to ask before we move to the vote on this paper? We've got a query. Sharon Waldron has asked, primary schools don't receive information about confirmed numbers for their new reception classes until May. So very hard to budget for the impact of this in the timescale. That's a good point, Sharon. Yeah, I can understand how that has a big impact. Okay, so if we now move to the vote then, please. So once again, it's forum members only to vote. And if I can ask Barbara to put the vote up on the screen, which is we are being asked if we agree it would be appropriate to amend Suffolk's growth policy to include a falling roles fund from twenty twenty two, twenty three. And this, this is in order for Mike to go away and work up a proposal to come back to Forum for us to agree. That's right, isn't it, Mike?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So this isn't committing as to what the, the proposal is going to look like yet. It's just asking that Mike and his team to go away and work up a proposal. So if you could now vote whether you're in favour, against or abstain, please.
Hi, Alison, it's Maria. I'm really sorry, but the votes are not appearing and I can't actually see anything in the chat. I think, I think it's a problem my end. I have tried leaving and re coming into the meeting.
All right.
It's not making any difference.
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you a moment to do that. But I don't think it's going to influence the result as such, but I'll allow you time to do that. At the moment, we've had ten responses. So there is still somebody else. I would now had eleven. Thank you very much. And I'll just give Maria time to log out and come back.
I think Alison Maria has already done that, has logged out.
Oh, she's tried that already?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we have ninety one percent for and nine percent against. So on that basis, Mike, we've agreed that we would like you to amend Suffolk's growth policy to include a falling roles fund from twenty twenty two, twenty three. And you'll come back to talk to us about what that might look like. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Graham.
Thank you. Okay. Right, move back to my agenda screen. So that has concluded all of our decision making and information papers for today. So we now have the next item on the agenda is the forward agenda. Adrian, I'll, I'll look to you. I know we haven't added anything during the discussion today, but is there anything that has been flagged with you?
Thanks, Alison. Yeah, we've got, obviously we've got the November meeting where we will be doing the voting on the de delegation. So that's specifically for local authority maintained schools. We also will have early years at that meeting. I think I'm right in saying that, Sonia. We wanted to have a look at early years.
Yeah, so what we're hoping for is that if we've had the recruitment information back by then, we'll be able to bring a paper on that. And even if we haven't, what we might be able to, or what we should be able to bring back, or Christina can probably do that, is a, how we would our proposals for how we would delegate at any surplus. That might be, you know, in, in, in the sort of the short, if we have to have a shorter measure, I would suggest that's what we'll do. And the other paper Mike will bring will be the school budget setting. So we'll have that. And Gemma will be bringing the paper on an update on the high needs block deficit and the template that we share with Schools Forum on a termly basis. And that will include the vote for the point five percent from the schools block to, as, as we'd agreed last year. So I think that's what we've got on the agenda for November.
Thanks, Sonia. Yeah, it's a fairly full agenda lesson, but obviously forum members may have things that they would like to raise. And just while people are thinking about that and linked to it, we'll give a bit of an update on the revised induction programme. We've got, welcome, Rowena, here as a new member of Forum. There are still some vacancies on Forum. We're going to go out again to seek new members. That has to be done by election. And we're, we're going to wait till we've done that cycle because there'll probably be several new forum members. And we'll say a little bit about that induction programme and also the mentoring. And we'll say a little bit about that induction programme and also the mentoring.
And Adrian, there's also the election process that I know you have, uh, in preparation for the, uh, election for those members who've been on Forum for a long time, who, for whom there hadn't been a reelection process in place until we agreed earlier this year. So again, for new members, uh, we'd agreed that, um, that there needs to be a, a reelection process for, for those places on Forum. And I think you're proposing to do that after October half term. Is that right?
That, that's correct, Alison. Um, some forum members will remember that we had a, a, a small task and finish group made up of Forum members that looked at a way forward with this. They developed a solution. And we will be going out to election for those six longstanding members. And of course, we hope we'll stand again, um, to, to rejoin Forum. But yeah, that will take place, um, after half term.
Thank you. And, uh, just to point out that Mike has just put in the chat, um, that the growth paper may need to be after Christmas as the modelling will need to be based on the October 21 census information. So in order to have time for the modelling to happen, the November meeting may well be too early for that. So that one will come after Christmas. And the October and November meetings are often our busiest, um, agenda meetings because there's lots of decision-making that needs to be done, ready for, um, getting decisions made to be put into place, to meet DFE deadlines, to inform them of what our planning is, and also to do the preparation for the new financial year and get all of the, um, all the wonderful budget packs ready for all the schools. So we, we have to make the decisions in the autumn in preparation for that. So we often find that these two meetings for new members are, are two of our busiest meetings of the year. Okay. So the future meeting dates, uh, were on your agenda. So our next meeting is on Tuesday, the 30th of November, between 9:30 and 12. Um, I'll just do a final reminder to members that, um, you know, i- it is important to try to attend and to prioritise this meeting. But if, um, there's unforeseen circumstances that mean you can't attend, then you, um, that, there is provision in the terms of reference for you to send a substitute so that somebody else from, from your, um, type of setting or, uh, education, well, setting, uh, has the opportunity to substitute it for you for the point that Amanda made at the beginning of the meeting, that it's important that there's a range of voices round the table while we're making, um, these important decisions for all schools and education settings in Suffolk. So I thank you all very much for your time this morning and I'll now declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.